Hey, do we have, do we have everyone? I see Milton, I see Trustee Bakes. I see Trustee Hinton. I see our beloved Chancellor. Who else is out there in Zoom land? We're past the appointed time here. Where are you? Okay, I guess we're gonna start without you. Cause I have five thirty, so we need to get going.
And you have a forum.
Alright, there we go, of mid to now. Okay, the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at five thirty PM. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to AB three sixty-one and YACCD Resolution Number Two One dash two-two-point-zero-nine. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience, excuse me, as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members and others who are participating via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of the board members, student trustee, and chancellor. We also welcome any member of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the YACCD YouTube channel for thirty days in accordance with our board policy, two-three-six-five recording. As a reminder, board members are asked to quote "raise their hand" end quote via Zoom when they wish to speak. Everyone is encouraged to mute their audio and not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested that public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud by staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. Persons seeking to make an in-real-time public comment may do so at the time of the agenda item and are asked to use the quote "raise" end end quotes Zoom feature. I ask that trustees mute themselves at this time. And I would like to call upon Trustee Leslie Bakes to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautifully done. Thank you, Leslie. Uh, I will, now we'll move on to item four-point-three, roll call and establishment of quorum. I would now ask the board stenographer to conduct the roll call for attendance.
Drew, Chair Garrett, in addition to confirming that you are present, I'll ask that trustees also respond to to the three questions listed on the agenda. Can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Student trustee, Arshia Amir Salamani.
And yes to all three.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Aguilas?
Present and yes to all three.
Vice Chair Beg?
Present and yes to all three.
But, um, Board Chair Darren Garrett?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Nancy Hinton?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Jenny Nicolau?
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Richards?
Yes, and present.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Balkan?
Present and yes to all three.
Forum is established.
Thank you very much. And moving on to item four-point-four, report out from closed session. There are no reportable items to report out from closed session. Four-point-five, changes in order of business. The board reserves a right to modify the order of business in manner that it deems appropriate by consent of the board. At this time, I ask trustees if there's any interest in changing the order of business. Going once, going twice, no, no yelling, screaming, okay, it stands as it is. Alright. Let's move on now to item four-point-six, approval of the minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Trustees' special meeting. I'll give a, a little bit of time here and then entertain a motion to accept.
Trustee Garrett, I move to accept the minutes of November nineteenth.
Motion made by trustee Balkan to accept the minutes of the November nineteenth Board of Trustees' special meeting. Is there a second?
Second to motion.
Second by trustee Jenny Nicolau. So we have a motion, a second, move to roll call vote, please.
Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Vice Chair Beg?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
I'm gonna abstain, I was not present at the meeting.
Trustee Richard?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And trustee Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is six, uh, in favor, with one abstention, motion carries.
Okay, moving on now to item four-point-seven, approval of minutes of December eighth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Trustees' regular meeting. Same thing, uh, give you time to review if necessary, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Trustee Garrett, I move to approve the minutes of December eighteenth, of December eighth, excuse me.
Okay, uh, approval made by, uh, or motion made by trustee Margie Balkan, is there a second?
My trustee Hinton will second the motion.
Okay, motion seconded by trustee Nancy Hinton. Any further questions, discussions, hearing or seeing now, roll call vote, please.
Chair Garrett?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beg?
I'm gonna abstain, cause I haven't seen those yet.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
I'm going to abstain, as I was not at the December board meeting.
And trustee Balkan?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor with two abstentions, uh, motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on now to item four-point-eight, public comments. Uh, at this time, I asked that the boards, uh, I asked the board stenographer to first read aloud any public comments received via email, then introduce in-real-time public comment requests. Please note, all email correspondence relating to this meeting will become part of the board minutes.
Garrett, there were no, uh, public comments received via email. If there are any from members of the public who are, uh, attending in person would like to raise their hand to make a public comment, I will look out for any raised hands.
Okay.
There are none at this time, so we'll.
And I'm not seeing, um, uh, any either, so, uh, we'll move on now to item five-point-one, Board Finance Committee, uh, report. I know this will devastate many of you, but, uh, there, there's no Board Finance Committee to report out on, so the next, the next one will be on February the seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and you'll be excited to hear about that one. So, uh, we'll move on now to Board, uh, Board Policy Committee Report. Uh, trustee Hinton?
The board met on Monday, and we did our second readings, which you should have in your packet. And, uh, we'll be voting on those. We just asked that you, uh, accept the readings as with the changes that were made, and Kimberly, um, Gibbs will give the reports later in the meeting. Um, trustees, Bakes, and Nicolau, do you have any other comments?
It was beautifully run and, and fantastic work on, on being sensitive to time, but also taking the time needed to get the job done. So hats off to you, Chair Hilton.
Thank you. Um, I wish it was Hilton, but anyways, um, uh, it's okay. Um, so that's it. So we'll go back to our honorable Chair Garrett.
Alright, thank you very much, trustee Hinton. Uh, and I know when the item comes up, you'll have, you'll, uh, make the recommendations as far as those, uh, policy recommendations, so thank you very much. We'll move on now to item six-point-one, uh, presentation repopulating enrollment plan update, Columbia College and Modesto Junior College and EOC update. And do we have Lorene or Amy waiting to join us?
Here I am. Okay, um, good evening, Chancellor Young and trustees. Um, I'm here to provide a COVID report for Stanislas County. And, uh, I'd like to share my screen in just a moment. Um, but we are in a surge due to Omicron, and we're about one week in, in Stanislas County. I'm gonna go right now to the Stanislas County dashboard. And you can see here that our vaccination rate for fully vaccinated is at fifty-six percent. It hasn't moved beyond this number in weeks. Uh, the case rate, uh, is here on the right, if I can see it better. Um, the case rate for the not fully vaccinated is much higher than for those who are fully vaccinated. So you can see that solid blue line is the not fully vaccinated, and that case rate is at about ninety-two per one hundred thousand. The fully vaccinated rate is fif- just about fifty per one hundred thousand. On page two. On, uh, this report, you can see that about eight hundred cases were reported today. Around ninety-nine people per one hundred thousand are infected in the county, and we're at the highest, uh, rate we've seen since the pandemic started. Uh, keep in mind that some cases are going undetected because of at-home testing. The third page shows hospitalization numbers. See if I can go through here. I've got a delay. Well, it's not advancing, so I'll just report out what it says, but this is a public-facing dashboard, so, oh, here we go. Go back, it jumped forward a little bit. Okay. Actually, one more prior, sorry about that. One more. Or is the death information? Okay, here we go. Sorry about that, a little glitchy. So, um, hospitalizations are going up slightly, as you can see here in the green graph. Uh, we know that rates usually lag between two and four weeks behind case rates, so the county will be following this metric closely. And you can see here on the right, this is ICU, and it's starting to creep up just a bit at twenty-seven beds. So our current understanding about Omicron is that it's not causing severe symptoms, especially among the vaccinated and the boosted. Um, California Department of Public Health reports that between December twenty-seventh and January second, that unvaccinated people were eight times more likely to be hospitalized with COVID than fully vaccinated people. Uh, finally, just wanted to mention that the EOC members are working together to created isolation and quarantine protocols from the California Department of Public Health for employees and students. Uh, so now I'll turn it over to Lorene to report on Toowalomee County.
Uh, good evening, Chair Garrett and trustees. I'm gonna share my screen also to show you the Toowalomee County report. Is that visible?
Yes.
Um, thank you. This is today's dashboard, which is of course available in public facing. We are also, um, finding the start, as you can see, at the very end of the orange line here, we're starting our Om- Omicron surge. Um, we have had about a hundred new cases every daily since the last five days, currently holding five hundred and eighty-six cases in the county at this time. Six hospitalizations, the hospitalization rate has varied between six and ten. It's not elevating as fast as the case rate is. Uh, we have added three deaths in the last two weeks. The case rate of a hundred and thirteen-point-seven is the highest case rate that we've had in the pandemic. And just for a comparison, I pulled up, uh, just two weeks ago on December twenty-eighth. At that time, the county was holding a hundred and nineteen cases they were following with a case rate of twenty-four-point-two, so it's quadrupled in two weeks. Um, I think that might be, uh, just a helpful comparison. The other thing that we have had in Toowalomee County is two new public health officer orders. One from July, excuse me, one from January third and the other from January tenth, and these are both in relation to the newly adopted, uh, shorter quarantine guidelines, which we're starting to implement. And it's also, um, indicating there are new guidelines for, um, all facilities and healthcare workers, uh, categories. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Okay, are there any questions for Amy or Lorene at this point, from any of the trustees?
Um, I had one, Darren.
Sure.
Um, are, are you going to be reporting on the results of our own internal testing on our campuses?
And this, Amy, I, I don't have reports on the testing, but I do have, uh, a report on the case notifications that we, that we received that the investigators are working on actively.
I believe trustee Stewart is going to give that information after the presidents do their, um.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, I'm not seeing any of the ra- raised hands, so we'll move on to, uh, either of the presidents, whoever wants to go first.
We have Dr. Bean.
Okay, Santanu.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Third day of spring semester. It has been quite eventful, to say the least. First day, uh, we had lines snaking out of both of the testing centers at East Campus and West Campus. Yesterday, the lines diminished to a certain degree in the second half, but still there were lines. And today, since mid-morning, we are not seeing any lines at all. So when we're looking at it, uh, we have tested, uh, more than four thousand tests since we, the last few days, and about three thousand plus students have been tested. We're trying to get into a little bit more in-depth information that those who have been tested, how many of them are vaccinated versus how many are unvaccinated, to get an idea that what is going to be the repeat consumer coming back up on following Monday and Tuesday. So as of now, it seems that about a third to a quarter were vaccinated, which means two-thirds to one, three-fourths, they are unvaccinated. So we would expect another surge for testing on Monday and Tuesday. And Monday being a holiday, probably we are anticipating the rush to be more pronounced on Tuesday and Wednesday, unless we can somehow cause people or entice people to come and do the testing on Monday itself, which seems like a remote possibility. We're also looking at some of the segmentation of areas that if there are specific groups who can go for the RT-PCR test, which lasts for a longer period of time, and get that taken care of on Friday, so they're good for the next week or so, it might ease off some of the loads. Do not know how many of the loads, but the machinery is working very well in looking at the data and the numbers and see what best we can do. We are also talking to the agency to see how much we can expand our capacity. Now, this is a very difficult game, in the sense that we cannot really change the capacity by hour. We have to contract them for a specific period of time, and as you know, everything costs money. So if we set up five more stations, then that will be costing a lot of money, and we contract them for a whole period of time. Two days they're busy, and next three days they're watching the paint dry. So that's not going to be good for us. And that's why we are trying to see where is the rational point. In this time, I walked the lines, I talked to the lines, so did the vice presidents and the deans, I saw many of them, talking to them. So one of the things that we saw is when we talked to the students, they are, uh, they're understanding what's happening, what's going on. They were definitely, uh, kind of confused on the first day, thinking that, am I going to be late for the class? What happens? Am I going to be dropped? And those kind of anxiety. So the dean's team communicated with the faculty members, saying that please hold on to the spots, do not just reject them if they are not there on the first hour of the class. Yesterday, many classes, although there was a full roster, roster, but they went empty, but today the situation has improved. And it is, I'm hoping that tomorrow also, we would see a very short line. We tried to add some excitement to that atmosphere in the East Campus, ASMJC jumped in, some music, some coffee, donuts. On the West Campus, we had some line of, uh, chairs so that people can sit on when they're waiting for the long period of time. So we're doing everything we can to ease up that, uh, situation, and also keep communicating with the students. There are some issue with the app as well, and, uh, everybody's not getting their green check appropriately. So on one hand, we are trying to improve that situation. On the other hand, all the check-in desks, we are telling them that if anybody can show some reasonable amount of proof, whether it's paper, an email, whatever it is, let's accept that. And we are dealing with our students, our job is to welcome them to the campus and get them into the classrooms. Let's talk about the brighter side. Our FTEs today was more than five thousand. That's more than a three percent gain that we have at this point of time compared to last year. On an individual headcount basis, we have thousand more students this, this spring contrasted with last spring. So again, that's a significant, large number of students. And the message that we are trying to give to the students is, thank you for coming here. You're welcome. We will support you inside the classroom, outside the classroom. How can we help you in your academic journey? So we do not just look at this semester, but look at repopulating the campus with the same students next year, next semester, so that we can hold on to our enrollment. I don't know much of the comparative statistics from the state, because we are the first out of the block to start our semester. Talking to, uh, just unofficially with my colleagues, I'm yet to hear somebody talking about enrollment gains at this point of time. Now, I've been proven wrong before in life, I may be proven wrong this time also. So I'll wait for the results to come in. But I think a three percent gain, it serves us in good stead, and let's see how many more we can keep enrolling and how we can make the students feel welcome, cause the great communication plan, that marketing plan that has happened, that has attracted the students, now it's us to hold on to them, provide the support that they need. And, uh, yes, we are all there. And anything that we can do to make their life easy, make their life that they're, I mean, the basic thing is the mentality that, yes, you're welcomed here. We are not treating you as a carrier of a disease and a problem. We are here to serve you, we are here to help you in your academic journey. That's where our mindset is, and that's what we are trying to promote. I'll be happy to answer any question.
Any questions for the president of Modesto Junior College? Okay, we'll move on now to the president of Columbia College, GH.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, at, uh, Colo- uh, I am unmuted, right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, at Columbia College, uh, we opted for the antigen test. Uh, we have not received those kits yet. Uh, I understand there is a supply of them are coming in by this Friday. Uh, Vice Chancellor, uh, Stewart is going to make a report on that. Uh, but, uh, I do notice that, uh, our employees and students do wear masks outside and inside. Yesterday, I noticed a number of, a large number, a group of, uh, fire technology students were carrying these huge, uh, red bags, uh, supplies and equipment on their backs, and they were walking long distances. Still, they had their masks on outdoors, so that is really a good sign to, uh, to report. Uh, as far as enrollment is concerned, uh, by the way, as far as the, uh, testing is concerned, we're going to start our testing process next week, uh, and as soon as we get the supplies in. Uh, as far as enrollment is concerned, we're doing well, not as well as our, as MJC is doing, but, uh, we were fall to fall. Last semester, we're behind by ADFTSs. We're now, spring to spring as of today, we're just about ten FTSs behind last spring. So this campaign has, has made some, uh, significant difference in, uh, in enrollment um, increases at the, at the college. Um, otherwise, everything else is going, uh, just, uh, according, and the semester started well. And, uh, we're looking forward to a, uh, relatively, uh, COVID-free and, um, problem-free semester, uh, in, in spring. If there's any questions, if there's any.
Thank you, GH. Any questions for, uh, the president of Columbia College? Okay, we'll move on now to, uh, Vice Chancellor Trevor Stewart.
Thank you, Chair Garrett and trustees. So we finally have, uh, made available on the Yosemite.edu website a, uh, dashboard that will be updating daily, that shows the total amount of tests that have been conducted, which also shows the positive counts on there. As we noted, we're currently only testing in Modesto, and so as we develop the Columbia testing, we will look at adjusting that dashboard to most likely separate out the Columbia results from the Modesto results. Uh, the dashboard includes some individuals that may have tested elsewhere, as well as what we are seeing on campus. And since we began our testing, uh, just early last week, over sixty-one-hundred, uh, tests have been reported through the dashboard, primarily being on campus. Uh, the question, uh, from trustee Bakes is, you know, what we hear about positives. So through the reporting that we have, and individuals may have been tested twice if they were positive. Uh, there are four hundred and twenty-five positives, so our positivity percentage is less than seven percent, definitely less than the county averages that we're seeing, and less than the statewide averages. So we are, uh, keeping an eye on that. That would really give us an idea of, of what we're seeing within our employee and student populations. So our big concern moving. So our big concern moving forward is the supply chain issues. We're dealing with that firsthand up in Columbia, the fact that we had some supply ordered, and it still has not come in yet. We have the tracking numbers, and we know that a little over fifty percent of the tests for Columbia will be arriving on Friday, as GH indicated. As soon as Columbia has those, they'll be distributing those and begin testing on that campus. Currently, MJC has what I would call adequate supply, definitely enough to get us through the next couple of weeks. The concern relates to the request for testing across the country. And the primary recipient of those tests are the hospitals. And so we are working with our vendor to make sure we continue to maintain an adequate supply on campus. So once Columbia gets up and running, we're feeling confident that testing can continue. I, I didn't quite hear if Amy or Lorraine reported on it. But another thing that the EOC was, has been evaluating in this last week is the updated quarantine and isolation guidelines. So although we're still working through those, we will be working with our nurses, with human resources, and evaluating how soon we can implement those new guidelines, which are a lesser period of time. So we will be doing that hopefully within the next week or so. And with that, again, out on the dashboard, we do anticipate updating that daily. The idea was that we report it once, so each of the colleges' websites in the COVID area should have a link that pulls you to the chart, as well as the primary location being on the assemity.edu COVID resources site. So we're hopeful to continue to provide the campus and the community with that updated testing information. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Stewart. Any questions for the Vice Chancellor? Okay, not, not seeing any at this point? Oh, okay, trustee Beggs.
I just had one, I was thinking that it would be helpful if, if you also told us on the positive cases, how many of those are among vaccinated, unvaccinated, or unknown? It would be nice to have the stats broken up that way.
We will work with our vendor to see if we have access to that information. There are two different dashboards between testing and vaccination, and so we will determine if we can run that report so it can be included.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now, unless there's any other last minute, nope, going for it. Okay, six point two association reports. And we'll start off with the Associated Students of Columbia College, ASCC President Ricky Lee Corba.
Hi, Board, good to see you all again, I hope you are well. We are happy to be back on campus. We've had multiple events this week to welcome our students back on the campus. They've all gone, gone super well and super smoothly. And we're very excited to have our, like, the ASCC's event tomorrow, Lunch with Your Leaders. Campus is very lively with students right now, and I'm very excited to see what the rest of the semester has in store for us. Thank you, any questions?
Wonderful news, any questions for Ricky? Nope, Ricky, thank you so much. We'll move on now to the Associated Students of Modesto Junior College, ASMJC President Maria Marquez.
Hello, good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. I am very happy to see you all this afternoon, and I hope everybody had a great winter break. So I'll start right away with my report for ASMJC. Last year, ASMJC had their winter retreat. We had fun activities and games where we had bonding experiences and being able to work in a team, getting to know each other and creating great memories. As well during our winter retreat, we held our last Senate meeting for the semester where we passed a resolution where ASMJC supported the implementation of guidance for webcams on online classes for Modesto Junior College, as the document was called. ASMJC is excited for this beginning of the spring semester. And as new and returning students are coming back on campus, majority of them are in need of help. So ASMJC had the pleasure to hel- held the positive, positive five tables, where we gave out coffee and pastries for students that were lined up for their COVID testings and results. As well, giving out information on programs and services, even gave maps to help them locate their classes. Even had the pleasure to see Chancellor Young on campus, had a little chat, and he helped us promote our tables. As well, everybody knows that today is Wednesday, ASMJC has officially started with Flow, which is free lunch on Wednesdays. Where for this semester, we're giving out meal vouchers for students so they can use this for both campuses cafeterias, as it, and are in hope that this can help them through their difficult times. As known, ASMJC is participating on the positive vibe tables. I had the pleasure to talk with several students who had concerns and problems with the new system that campuses holding for the COVID protocols, which is gaining through the process of acquiring the green card. Pointing out that most of the students that I was talking to were our senior students and students with disabilities, which requires most of the help. And making emphasize that even the younger students had difficulties getting the, through this process. And is politely asking for a possibility to create a video that goes step by step into how to acquire this green card. And make it easier for students in order to get this and being able to go through their classes and everything. As we dive into this new semester, ASMJC is excited to see new students on campus and held events, and from our part, thanking the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young, as well all the people who participated in this meeting, to wish them a Happy New Year and have a great rest of the year. That concludes my report, I hope everybody is safe, please let me know if there is any questions.
Are there any questions for President Marquez? Not seeing any, Maria, thank you so much, have a great school year. Next will be California School Employees Association, CSCA President Amy Lovett.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Chair Garrett, fellow trustees, and Chancellor Young. I'm happy to report that in December, the new CSCA Executive Board election was finalized. We are excited for what this new year will bring. The 2022 CSCA leaders are as follows, President Amy Lovett, First Vice President Monica Shortner, Second Vice President Patrick Ryan Krebs, Secretary Ariana Kennedy, Treasurer Lisa Shuck, Communications Officer Viza Vasquez, Chief Union Steward James Thomas, and Tiffany Versola, serving as past president. The last couple of weeks, classified professionals have been gearing up for the new semester. Whether it be prepping the classroom and grounds for students returning, implementing new software updates, ordering new supplies, assisting students with financial aid forms, and answering student questions in person, on the phone, Zoom, and chat. Yes, we continue to work virtually while being physically on campus. As the semester has kicked off, all classified professionals have been following the COVID nineteen testing mandate baseline, uploading vaccination card and getting tested. The first week of testing saw minimum wait times on both MJC campuses. As students join in the testing, we have classified waiting for long periods of time. With the increase in population on campus and mandatory testing, there has been a great increase in positive COVID cases and exposures. Many classified professionals are placed on a ten-day quarantine with our sick and vacation time being quickly used up. Last fall, we were successful with working with the Human Resources Department of having communications sent out district-wide of positive cases with the building of exposures listed. Since returning from holiday break, we no longer receive the notification of positive cases. It was announced this week that the new process would be a dashboard on the YCCD website. However, classified professionals are still wanting the notification, the buildings that these positive cases have happened, as many members are in multiple buildings throughout the day and night. We understand and are grateful for the opportunity and luxuries offered by working here at YCCD. As an institution of higher education, we all desire to be able to work in a safe and healthy environment, as employees will thrive and become more successful in work and life. CSCA has also resumed the preparation of benefit negotiation process for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Many have expressed immense concern about cost-sharing benefits during the COVID climate, as that will have a tremendous negative impact on our health, well-being, and ultimately causing dire financial hardships for classified professionals. The lowest-paid classified position hourly wage is barely over minimum wage. With increasing cost of gas, housing, products and services, since rising cost of inflation, a cost-sharing of benefits imposed by the district will potentially cause more financial hardship for many of the employees and their dependents. We hope to have a mindful and more understanding from our leaders during our negotiation process so we can reach an agreement that can provide the best benefit options for employees in this institution. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees on behalf of CSCA Chapter 420.
Thank you, Amy, are there any questions for Amy? No, thank you again, Amy. We'll move on now to item three, the Faculty Representative of the Board, Alan McKestick.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to address you. Happy New Year, and here we are in the next chapter of pandemic in the YCCD. So far, I have found the first week of the semester to be encouraging, but not without major challenges. I will reference my own experience because from what I am hearing, it has been somewhat typical. First, about enrollment. Last semester, enrollment in my classes was anemic and worrisome. This semester, enrollment is robust in my classes, and I continue to get requests to add. Our district's aggressive initiative to increase enrollment seems to be making significant gains. That initiative has been innovative and multifaceted, and district leaders deserve to be recognized. Related to that, my students and I have been using the new system for adding students. Faculty sentiment at this point is that thus far, it has been challenging. And we hope it's not undermining enrollment to some small degree. Of course, the new system has some good features. However, it probably would be going smoother if representatives of the faculty organizations had been a greater part of its development and implementation. That is not just about the resulting system, it is also about the best dissemination of information to the faculty and the most buy-in from a constituency critical for best performance of this new system. Going forward, a more collegial approach is needed for its ongoing improvement, and I trust that will happen. I will report that during the class I taught today on Zoom, a number of students have COVID. About fifteen percent of the class, with varying degrees of severity, but they're all trying to keep up with the class. Which speaks to, I guess, this surge in Omicron. In a Zoom class, it is maybe possible for them to keep up with the class. Now, as far as the system of testing and certification for students in-person classes, for students in in-person classes, we know it has been a little bit of a rough start, and you've heard some reports already this evening. But perhaps this must be expected from this unprecedented situation. You have heard from district leaders doing their best to be responsive and creative. From speaking to my colleagues, I would urge that direction to faculty members as to the role they play be further clarified, and that communication with faculty be as quick, complete, and clear as possible on these matters. I know the board wants an ongoing, flexible, and responsive effort to manage COVID in our district and how it's affecting student success. It's up to all of us to make that happen, to keep our board informed and involved, and I trust that will happen. Thank you again for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Alan, any questions for Alan? Not seeing any, Alan, thank you so much. We'll move on now to Academic Senate Activity Reports, Columbia College Academic Senate President Lana Van Epp.
Thank you so much for having me address you this evening, and Happy New Year. Remember, it's twenty-twenty-two, not twenty-twenty-two. Let's, let's hope we're not having a complete repeat. So, first things first, many of us at Columbia College thought tonight was the night that we were going to hear about an announcement for our new Columbia College president. We're all waiting with bated breath, and I hear that there is going to be an announcement of where we are in that process, instead of hearing who our next president will be, but we are anxiously awaiting that result. This first week back to classes has been, I'll just say, challenging. There's been a lot of things that are different. You know, the devil's in the logistics, how can we do a testing mandate when there's a worldwide supply chain, supply chain issues with the tests? And then, right, so Modesto got their test, but then there's some issues with the app. Instead of thirty minutes for an upload, it's four hours, so that's having some difficulty. I'm going to try to act myself as a, like a system tester for how things are going at Columbia, so I can really know how the student process is going to be able to go and, and act as more as a faculty liaison there. But, you know, we couldn't do any of this without Lorraine Campana, who has worked tirelessly on our behalf, thank you, thank you, Lorraine, from the bottom of all of our hearts. This is also the first semester without our on-campus bookstore, the hub for students to get all their supplies and books, you know, one-stop shop. So we now, of course, have our Barnes and Noble online bookstore, and there have been orders that weren't received, books not arrived, delay of days to weeks for students to get their textbooks for their classes. We're trying to keep the Columbia chill, but it is, it has been a, it has been a challenge. I think now more than ever, we think, we would like to thank our bookstore, Liz Remney, for her many, many years of service. I think we more deeply appreciate everything she has done for students and faculty in district in her absence from having a bookstore. Other, other flies in our ointment, or however you want to say it, there's some road construction going on right in the entrance or the access road to Columbia College, creating some delays and stress for our students. So it's like, oh my gosh, is there anything that's going well? Well, yeah, there is some good news. Parking being free means that there is a way less fussing around at the entrance of campus. So, hey, nudge, nudge, wink, wink, I hope the board will be excited to support ongoing free parking at Columbia, especially since there are no other locations in the Columbia service area where there is paid parking, so it really doesn't make sense for our campus. Mostly, I want to thank all of our, our faculty and classified staff, division deans, admin, supporting all students, whether it's online or in-person formats, like, right, we're, we're all here for that purpose, and all of us are working so, so hard for such long hours. And moving forward, our summer classes are about ready to be published. Fall schedule is in the works, I mean, we're just keeping moving, everybody is working at top capacity. And I, thank you so much, Columbia College, for, for everything that you do. We're, and we've got all sorts of exciting things happening with Academic Senate. We've had our very first meeting, we've talked about activities requirements for our students, and changes to smoking areas on campus and smoking cessation, revisiting our core values. We're having our first Senate executive this week, and we're going to be working with Classified Senate President Abby Sunday to have classified representation on our Academic Senate, try to bridge that divide between faculty and staff, working more closely together. We're also very excited that we'll have our shared MJC and Columbia College meetings. So Aisha, if I'm stepping on your toes and you're going to talk about this too, where I just am so excited that we're going to have our Senate executive teams get together next week, and we're going to talk about course alignments and shared definitions for course, course modalities, common application, common transcripts, trainings that we need in the district, like cell service and the, the new bookstore thing and eTrev. I'm looking at our website, there's a whole bunch of things that faculty from both colleges can have our eyes on. Really excited about that. So just one last thing, when I was looking through the board agenda tonight, I was so excited to see seven point six consent agenda, Deborah Volter. I hope that when she returns from her research in South Africa, she will have another presentation on, on the Homo Natalie and Australopithecus Cittibat, I don't know how to say that word, but I hope she'll give another presentation at Columbia since her presentation from, I was going to say a few years ago, but I'm guessing it's more like a decade ago. You know how time is funny like that? But her last presentation was so impactful, and I just loved hearing her speak. Faculty going out into the world and bringing these things back to our community. So, I think that's all for me tonight. Lots going on, lots of challenges, but we're all working on it. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Lana? Nope, Lana, thank you so much. We'll move on now to M J's, Modesto Junior College Academic Senate President Ayesha Saleh.
Hello, everyone. Chair Garrett, Trustees, Chancellor, thank you all for your time. I will say that I keep getting the warning that my internet connection is unstable, so if I cut out, I apologize in advance. M J C's Academic Senate has not yet met, since this is our first week back, but our Senate Executive meets tomorrow, and our Senate will hold their first meeting of the semester next week. We are going to be discussing our vision and goals for the Senate, and I look forward to reporting back to you all what is decided by faculty. This semester, our A C C T Institute is supporting M J C Forward. This collaboration will support community leaders, organizers and educational institutions, along with M J C faculty, students and administrators, as they work to transform the classroom into an exploratory laboratory. This will not only provide students with the space and support they need to grow and achieve their educational goals, but it will also be a space where community and the classroom come together in a way that uplifts everyone involved. Now, more than ever, as we tend to a local economy impacted by an ongoing pandemic, we need to think and act as a community. We're stronger and more innovative when we work together, and I'm excited to see the progression of this innovative work and look forward to seeing what they come up with to help our communities. Last semester, we implemented our new shared governance process, and this spring in the Senate, we will be reflecting on it and determining what changes, if any, need to be made. This semester, we will also see the Student Success and Equity Committee come together for the first time, and the Senate will continue to work on finding ways to positively impact student success. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the work being done at M J C by faculty, classified staff and administration to welcome and support our students. Every semester, there is an almost tangible excitement in the air as we all set off on our sixteen-week-long adventure, and this semester has been more eventful than most. We said goodbye to Pirates Net for students enrolling in classes and for faculty adding and dropping students from their courses. We're now using the self-service system, and the transition was bumpy. I want to commend our classified staff, faculty and administration for the way they supported one another as we all figured it out, and our students for their patience and resilience when things didn't go to plan. Classified staff communicated regularly throughout the day with updated directions, and faculty reached out to support one another by showing others how to use the new system. Ideally, it would have gone more smoothly. That's always the ideal. But I'm always impressed by the way that the M J C community comes together to support one another and our students. Our bookstore transition also completed, and students had a new website and systems to navigate when purchasing their textbooks this semester, which had some small hiccups, nothing major. And our East Campus Library and Learning Center building is currently closed, but the faculty and staff there have gone above and beyond to support our students and make sure that they're able to pick up the books they need to start off well in their classes. Another new challenge for our students as they tried to get to their classes and start the semester were the new COVID testing requirements. This has been mentioned by a few others, but with wait times reaching up to four hours on the first day, many students miss their classes, which of course is incredibly stressful for students when that happens. Classified staff, administrators, faculty and A S M J C all responded to the needs of our students and have worked to reassure and support them as they navigate this process. And I'm sure we all will continue to do so throughout the semester. A new semester doesn't usually have quite so many new challenges at the start, but our community college is pulling together to try and keep everyone excited to be back on campus, supported if they hope back on campus and were unable to do so as of yet, or if they chose to remain online and to encourage one another and our students as we embark on a new semester. Despite the challenges, we are excited to be back in our classrooms, be they physical or virtual, and we're looking forward to the possibilities that lie ahead. Thank you all for your time. That concludes my report.
Ayesha, thank you so much. Are there any questions for Ayesha Saleh? No, again, Ayesha, thank you so much. We'll move on now to Leadership Team Advisory Council, LTAC President Gillian Daly.
Report to us that she would not be providing a report today.
Okay, all right. Well, whatever she's doing, we wish her well. Hope she's having fun.
Busy start to the semester.
There you go, I'm sure. Move on now to Yosemite Faculty Association, Y F A President Dimitri Karyodas.
Good evening, Chair Garrett, Trustees and Chancellor Young, and Happy New Year to all. As I was constructing this report, the word hope constantly came to mind, so may this report be one of hope. Leadership's aggressive efforts to increase enrollments on both campuses has, has been a great success. I hope enrollments continue to rise. With this semester's gradual return to campus has come rocky starts on both college, at both colleges. We hope the situation will be smoothed out imminently to better ensure our goal of virus-free campus environments. The proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty-three state budget is a major beacon of hope that I'm sure gives us all relief and should help us wrap up certain projects. One such project is benefits. The Y F A team hopes to come to an agreement on benefits by the March fifteenth deadline. Our team is ready to reach such an agreement and looks forward to the next meeting, which is this Friday. And we hope that this period is COVID's last hurrah, and that we will soon move out of the COVID zone into a different normal, one that will reflect the changes that occurred over the past nearly two years. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. Are there any questions for Dimitri? Not seeing any. Dimitri, again, thank you so much. We'll move on now to item six point three, Presentation Updates, Yosemite Community College District Chancellor, Chancellor Young.
Thank you, Chair Garrett. I just have one item. I think a lot of us are waiting for the announcement, the next president of Columbia College. That process will be completed very soon, will be finalized hopefully by the end of this week or early next week. I had just received the last set of documents pertaining to reference checks last Wednesday afternoon. So the process is going, and hopefully we'll have news by the end of this week or early next week. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor Young. Any questions for the Chancellor? Nope. Thank you again, Chancellor Young. We'll move on now to the Consent Calendar, Section seven on our agenda. First, I'll ask if any trustee wants to pull an item from the consent calendar.
Trustee Garrett, I, Margie Balkan, would like to ask to pull seven point eleven for separate discussion and action.
Okay, seven point eleven. Which is the
Resolution for continuing Board of Trustees authority to hold virtual meetings.
Right, okay, so item seven point one one will be pulled for separate consideration. Any other trustee wish to pull an item? Okay, and then we have an update on the consent calendar from our Board's Synographer, Graciela Molina.
So, Modesto Junior College requested to pull or remove item seven point six consent agenda, Modesto Junior College out of ten free travel to Johannesburg, South Africa. As well, in addition, there is a correction to item seven point ten consent agenda personnel. So page one of two, or on the board's agenda, page thirty-five of two ninety-seven. In section Appointment Confidential Classified Management, the effective date for Mamwadita Walsh should be corrected to read January fourth of twenty twenty-two and not January thirteenth of twenty twenty-two as listed.
Okay, so with those corrections, our first vote will be to approve items seven point two through seven point one zero. I'll entertain a motion.
Trustee Garrett, I move the recommendation.
Okay, so a motion has been made to approve seven point two through seven point one zero. Is there a second? And the motion was made by trustee Balkan.
I second the motion.
Okay, second on motion from trustee Jenny Nicolau. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify that seven point six has been pulled, so it is not
That's correct. I'm sorry. Thank you for pointing that out.
Just wanted to make sure that it was noted.
So let's clarify the record. So that will be item seven point two, three, four and five, seven, eight, nine and ten for the record.
Seven, 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 eight, nine and ten. Okay, so Chair Garrett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
Trustee Balkan.
Yes.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carry.
Okay, we'll move on now to item seven point one one. Trustee Balkan.
Thank you, Chair Garrett. I wanted to acknowledge again, as I did last month, that this resolution is for our consideration every thirty days after the first time that we pass it. I think it's worthy at least of some acknowledgement and discussion. And I remain a little at odds with this resolution considering that we've asked our, we've, we, we've been promoting come back to campus. And my, my at odds with it is that I feel ambiguous as a trustee to approve such a resolution. However, considering that the governor has, has a has cited a state of emergency that expires on March of this year. This resolution will continue to come before us for this meeting, the February meeting, and I suppose the March meeting. But given that our latest reports show a current surge this month, I will and hope to make the motion to approve this resolution. But I will continue to ask it to be pulled as we measure the message we are sending to all of our constituents to return to campus while we are considering a resolution to continue teleconferencing. And that's, those are the conclusion of my comments.
Hey, trustee Hinton.
Actually, I lowered, I was lowering it when I heard her the, the rest of her deal, because we do have under the C D C guidelines and some of the other ones that they're requesting all board meetings and commissions. And as a commissioned member with City of Modesto, they've called all of our meetings to Zoom as of yesterday. So.
Right. Trustee Dr. Richards.
I'm gonna beat Margie to the punch to move that we approve this. The only difference I have with Margie is until the meetings are open and people can be in there, I think it's pointless for us to meet publicly and, and talk to an empty room. But I, I definitely understand about sending the message, but at this point in time, and based on what Nancy just said, I, I would like to move this for approval.
And I'll second that motion. It's Margie, I'll second it.
So we have a, a motion to approve item seven point one one by trustee Dr. Milton Richards and a second by trustee Margie Balkan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Chair Garrett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And trustee Balkan.
Yes.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carry.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on now to item eight point one. Which is, I believe, where we're at, since we've had a group of people waiting patiently to get to this point on the agenda. And that is the public hearing in regards to the redistricting final maps. And I'm gonna just go a little out of the ordinary here, and I'm gonna open up the public, public hearing first. And if there was any one from the public who wants to comment on this item.
I think, Chair Garrett, if I may, I think it would be most appropriate for the presentation to be given first prior to the public hearing, just so that they're aware of what that they're given the opportunity to review the presentation.
Okay. So we'll go into the presentation.
Underfall, let me get that on the screen.
Do you have a comment, trustee Richards?
Trustee Richards, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I, I, I just want to make it really clear that we've, we've talked about these maps and nauseam, but the, the first presentation we see was, was, was very poor. And we specifically said that we wanted to see maps that did not remove any sitting trustees, and I believe map A does that, so I, I, I would, I would hope that we don't sit through a two-hour presentation that, that doesn't explain what we need to have done, because it's a very simple decision. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started with our presentation. My name's Kaymont Pleasure. I am a project manager with Redistricting Partners. Like trustee Richard said, we have gone through draft maps presentations before, and we're hoping to vote on a final map tonight. So we're gonna quickly go over some basics of redistricting before we get started for anybody who's new here. So redistricting is the process of adjusting district lines every ten years after the release of U S Census data. So when people usually think of redistricting, they think of congressional, legislative, but special districts like Yosemite C C D also go through this process as well. And within the United States, redistricting has become a very politicized process. And it's been subject to more high-profile Supreme Court decisions than any other part of our election system. So because of that, we have principles in place that we follow. And here they are. So we call them traditional redistricting principles, and they are really in place to prevent a districting from becoming a gerrymander. And so we have a number of criteria that is ranked and has also been used nationally and upheld by courts. The first of these is that districts have to be of relatively equal size. So when we talk about size, we're talking about total population, not citizens or voters. They also have to be contiguous, and what that means is that districts do not hop or jump. Or another way to word that is that you can draw it with one line. They also maintain communities of interest, which is really subjective, but ultimately it's a group of people that would benefit from being maintained in a single district. We also follow, follow city and census designated place boundaries. And finally, we keep districts compact in both appearance and function. So when we take, talk about compact in appearance, when most of you think of the word gerrymandering, I'm sure you think of those long, sneaky districts. We don't want our districts to look like that. We want to make sure they're as compact as possible. And also, we keep our districts compact and functional, so maybe a community might look like it's right next to another community, but there could be a freeway or a river or even a mountain that separates those communities. So we want to make sure that we're keeping them compact and functioning as well. So as mentioned before, we went through three draft maps previously, and we have them all here for you today, but in our last meeting, we decided to move forward with the draft map A. So draft map A is really a minimum change map. So we really focused on balancing population. And as trustee Richards mentioned before, there was a question about incumbency, and all of the incumbents did stay in their district. So we've not, not made any changes to our first draft map A. We also showed draft map B, which strengthens the Latino majority minority seat. And draft map C, which is also a minimum And draft map C, which is also a minimum, minimum change. But we have two Latino majority minority seats in that draft map. So here we have our current lines. And the change from the 2010 census to the 2020 census, we have had a total growth of seven point two percent. And our, and with our current lines, there's a total deviation of seventeen percent. And the maximum deviation that we can have is ten percent. So we do need to see some movement within the districts to make sure that we are balancing out those populations. So as mentioned before, we decided to possibly move forward with draft plan A, but we're doing that final vote tonight. So here we have draft plan A. It's a minimum change plan. And we, it has one fifty percent plus Latino citizen voting age population seat. So in this plan, we keep Waterford whole in District One. Del Rio is in District Two. By Strom is moved into District Seven. And then there are additional smaller adjustments that were really just made for population. So you can see and we'll do the, actually I'll bring you to the overlay now. You can see some smaller changes. So in the corner of District One, it goes into that northwestern portion of District Two. Some of District Two in the south goes into District Three. And to the east of that, a little bit of District Three goes into District Two. And then a corner of District Six is moved into District Two. And here we see the cities overlap for draft plan A. And finally, we can look at the data table here. We have a total planned deviation of seven percent. So it's well under that ten percent maximum deviation. And as I mentioned before, we have in District Seven, a majority minority Latino seat. And we also have two more draft plans. First of these is draft plan B, which sought to strengthen a single majority minority Latino seat. There were several changes in this map. First of these was that Waterford was kept whole in District One. More of Modesto is moved into District Six. Portions of Modesto into District Four. Portion of Saris and the whole of Keys into District Four. Portion of Modesto and West Modesto into District Seven. And that's what we have for just for Plan B. And then we have draft plan C, which has two majority minority Latino seats. And there were several changes in this map. It included Waterford being kept whole in District One. By Strom going into District Seven. Portions of Southern Modesto into District Five. Cowan into District Four. Del Rio into District Two. Empire and a portion of Modesto into District Seven. And more of Southern Modesto into District Six. So what we're looking for tonight is to vote to finalize a selective draft map for adoption. And our deadline is February first, but in the meantime, we will be, through the end of the process, we will be accepting input and your feedback on these draft maps or the final draft map. And that's at yosemiteccd@redistrictingpartners.com. And I'm happy to take any comments or questions at this point.
Okay, Kay, thank you very much. Any questions? For Kay. Let me see if I see any here. No, not, I don't see any. Well, I, I think at this point, I'll reopen the, the public hearing and see if there's anyone from our public community that, that wishes to speak now that we've had a presentation. I'm not seeing anyone. Graciela?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. I, I think, you know, I may have mentioned this before, so bear with me, but I, I think it's important to kind of go back from a historical perspective. You know, in California, community college districts were one of the last government entities to, to conform to a district representation model. That law was signed in 2011 by Governor Jerry Brown that created the districts that we now have within the Yosemite Community College districts, which are seven. Prior to that, community college districts, quote unquote, were laid out by where the original trustees when the district was formed lived. So interestingly enough, Area Five had three trustees in it. So when they showed up on the ballot, Area Five voted for three. And then interestingly enough, when those top three vote contenders got the, the majority of the votes for Area Five, then they were divided up into, into seven seats. It was a very strange process that California utilized within the community college system. Again, that law was passed in, in 2011 and went into effect at the elections in 2012. And now we're, we're bound by the same redistricting laws as, as every other entity in the state of California. And when, when people move around and we've got population changes and growth, things happen. And as I said before, when you live, and I'll, I'll put myself out there, when you live in an edge of, of a district and not in the center of a district. So I'll put myself out there. I live at the edge of my existing boundaries. So if there is a huge change in population growth, then there's a high probability that, that things are going to change with the geographic boundaries of trustee Area Five. If I'm Margie Vulcan or whoever represents Area One, the chances of you being moved out of that huge geographic area, unless you're, again, right on the fringe, are probably slim to none. If you're Dr. Milton Richards and you live in Turlock for Area Three, the chances of being moved out of that are slim to none. That's just the way the cookie crumbles, so to speak. And in this world of, of redrawing lines and boundaries. And they wouldn't, if we were to adopt something else, hypothetically speaking, they would not go into effect until the next election cycle. So that's just sort of where we're at in relation to community college districts and Yosemite Community College District here in our world. So with that, trustee Richards.
I move we adopt map A.
Okay, so we've had a, a, a motion to drop, adopt area map A. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Trustee Aguilar.
Okay, so we've had a motion to accept area map A by trustee Dr. Milton Richards, seconded by trustee Antonio Aguilar. Any further comments, questions, debate, anger, consternation? Seeing none? Okay, roll call.
Can we add that? Can we add that the, the board directs staff to submit the new district lines to the registrar of voters by the deadline of February one, twenty twenty two?
I accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you. Trustee Aguilar.
Yes, I, I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay. I'll take the roll call as suggested by the chair. Chair Garrett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And trustee Vulcan.
Yes.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carry.
Well, I just want to thank Kay and Redistricting Partners, Kay, and I want, I want to thank you for your, your bravery, your, your diligence and professionalism. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. So with that, we'll move on to item eight point two, Board Policy Second Reading. This is where trustee Nancy Hinton gets to shine at every meeting. So Nancy?
I'd like to make a motion. Well, first, Kimberly, do you want to say anything?
No, if there's no questions over the changes that were submitted by email to the trustees, then I have no statement.
Right. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept as you receive the changes for the policy and procedure for this month.
I'll second that motion from Margie Vulcan.
Okay, so we've had a, a motion to adopt the proposed policy revisions as presented and are, and are agendized by trustee Nancy Hinton and seconded by trustee Margie Vulcan. Any further comments or questions? Seeing or hearing none, roll call vote please.
Garrett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And trustee Vulcan.
Yes.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carry.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item eight point three, which is Resolution twenty one dash two two point one zero authorizing the issuance of the YCCD two thousand twenty two general obligation refunding bonds.
We have attorney David Casnoca sharing his video.
All right.
So Casnoca, would you like to?
Good evening, board members. You may remember me from some recent visits to the district because you're not considering issuing refunding bonds for the first time. If you recall, in 2020, the district sold about forty million dollars of refunding bonds. And now you have the opportunity to repeat the exact same process and refinance some bonds of yours that were sold in two thousand and fifteen, which are expected under current market conditions to produce a savings of about six million dollars and some change to local property owners within the boundaries of the district. And the documents that are before you tonight are strikingly similar to the documents you approved in 2020 for the last round of refunding bonds. And they involve the issuance of new bonds, the proceeds of which will be used to pay off the old bonds. And the debt service on these twenty twenty two bonds are provided to the county auditor, tax collector, treasurers, and will result in lower tax rates for property owners of your district. We're moving on a fast track. If the board approves this resolution tonight, we would expect that the bonds could be sold as early as two weeks from now with a bond closing later in January or beginning of February. So we're positioned to move forward with the board's approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for our bond counsel? Well, I, I, I for one, I think the quickest we can move on this before the Fed implements its first round of interest rate hikes, which will affect the rate on the ten year treasury. The quicker we do this, the better off are we and our taxpayers and the broader community will be. So with that, I see a hand up by trustee Dr. Milton Richards.
Move to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. And let me just read this aloud. This is the Board of Trustees adopts Resolution twenty one dash two two one zero Resolution authorizing issuance of the Yosemite Community College District Stanislas, Tooluma, Calabaro, San Joaquin, Santa Clara, and Merced Counties twenty twenty two general obligation refunding bonds attached to the January twelfth, twenty twenty two agenda. Is that your motion, trustee Richards?
It, it is, yes.
Okay, so with that read into the record, is there a second?
I am Margie Vulcan, second that motion.
Okay, trustee Vulcan has seconded the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none, roll call vote please.
Garrett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
Trustee Vulcan.
Yes.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carries.
Wonderful. David, thank you again for all your hard work. So with that, we'll move on to item eight point four Columbia College Childcare Center Continued Funding Application for fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. And let me see on my handy little guidance sheet here.
If there are any questions.
Yeah, this is, this is routine and customary.
Yes.
So.
Trustee, trust, Chair Garrett, I am Margie Vulcan, move to approve eight point four Columbia College Childcare Center Continued Funding Application for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
Second.
Okay, so we've had a, a motion to approve by Area One trustee Margie Vulcan. Thank you, Margie. You read my mind. And seconded by trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing or seeing none, roll call vote please.
Garrett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
Trustee Vulcan.
Yes.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carries.
Wonderful. A well-oiled machine tonight. Thank you all. We'll move on now to item eight point five Triple C T Board of Directors nominations for twenty twenty two. Does any member want to throw another member under the bus for, for this esteemed and illustrious position? I have an idea, but, but I kind of like Milton, so I won't do it. So. Anyone else?
I'll do it if no one else will, will.
Okay. So we have a, a person willing to step up.
If I make a motion that we nominate Dr. Milton Richards to be our representative.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we've had a motion to put forth Dr. Milton Richards by trustee Nancy Hinton, seconded by trustee Antonio Aguilar. Any further questions? Last minute to pull out, Milton? No? You're done. Okay, roll call vote please.
I am Chair Garrett.
Aye.
Or pardon me, Chair Barrett. My mistake. Vice Chair Beggs.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And trustee Vulcan.
Yes.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carries. And trustee Richards, I will send you the candidacy paperwork that you will need to complete.
Thank you for being willing to do it.
Yes, thank you. Moving on now to Section Nine Board Comments, requests for future board agenda items. Anyone? Trustee Richards.
Actually, I have three things. I, I, I mentioned the nursing program. I think that's moving along, but I would like to see that on the agenda sooner rather than later. I would also like to see some kind of proposals for, for costs and feasibility of a campus fitness center. And the last thing is I want to revisit the policy have where if you miss a meeting, you don't get paid. I think that's kind of ridiculous with all the amount of time that people put in. I don't know that I'll miss a meeting, but it might have to. But I think it's kind of ridiculous that we have to come back and vote to approve somebody when they lose their father or sickness or whatever. So I'd like to see that reviewed. I understand it has to go through Nancy's committee.
Okay, any, anyone else? Aye, trustee Aguilar.
Uh, well, I don't know if this is the right time to do it, but I had asked for a report on CTE and I'm still waiting for it. So hopefully it's coming. That was it.
Okay.
It's been about three months, so I've been pretty patient on this.
Hey, CTE.
Thank you.
All right, any, anyone else?
Actually, last month we asked for the FON. But never mind, take that, that's coming in the fall, so we're good.
Hey. Just to add on to what trustee Richards talked about in, in expanding the nursing program. You know, one of the things that, that the COVID pandemic has exposed is, is you know, our, our avenues for training for, for healthcare professionals, particularly in the you know, our our avenues for training for for healthcare professionals, particularly in the nursing field. And with that, if you've read the governor's proposed budget, he is allocating some money to to four-year institutions and community colleges for for nursing. Most of that money is earmarked for for new programs. But there is some money in there that I think that you know, the Yosemite Community College District could could utilize. I I know the the chancellor is is working on some concepts and I know Milton, he's you and he have had some great conversations. I think, you know, there's a lot of ways to to approach this. You know, whether we do it alone or we regionalize the program and and open up more avenues. But I'm totally in agreement that with money out there, and I think there's going to be federal dollars coming in as well for for expanding healthcare professional training, particularly in the nursing program. And if we if we get a national accreditation, which I know the chancellor is working on. So there's a there's a lot of opportunities there, and I look forward to a report from you, Chancellor, working with trustee Richards on on how we're going to accomplish that. So that's all I have. Last chance, anyone going once, going twice? Okay, so comments from the Board of Trustees. I'm going to go with our student trustee first because I want to get a a in the field perspective on on how things are going. So sorry I put you on the spot, but I want to hear what's going on with our students.
Oh, where is? Thank you, Chair Garrett. Good evening, fellow trustees. Chancellor Young and everyone else. Happy New Year. Woo! We're excited to be back. The you know, I the one word that really comes to mind when I'm thinking about our students is perseverance. I know there has been a lot of difficulty among students right now, especially on on Columbia College campus with the delay in testing and delay in textbooks. But you know, I still see the smiles. I still see the passion. I still see the drive from our students. So it's been, you know, regular speed bumps. But you know, I I feel like the students were were moving along to the best of our ability. And I really want to, you know, thank everyone here and thank, you know, faculty and staff on both campuses. I I you know, I think that I see the students feel supported by by our staff and faculty and everyone else. And I think that's it's really important to our students. So it's, yeah, so it's it's been, you know, it's there's been some road bumps, but but we're smiling. We're 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 moving forward. And I've attended, I attended the ASCC meeting. And it, everything is moving forward as normal. So we're taking in strides. So just glad to be back and glad to see everyone's faces and glad to reconnect with everybody and I'm just, I'm excited. I'm excited for the semester. It's this, it's going to be good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You know, take advantage of your position, especially as we're rolling out this testing. And so if there are things that you get relayed to you or you see as a as a problem that needs to be addressed as your position as student trustee with the chancellor, take advantage of that. That's what we want to hear. So thank you very much. Trustee Jenny Nicolau, I'm just going to go random tonight, so.
I'm glad you picked me. I was going to say to our student trustee, there's nothing I love better than a good woo-hoo. And I love, I love that folks are together. I love that the semester started. I know it's been a rocky couple days. I've been getting texts and pictures and stories. So first and foremost, I just want to say thank you to all of our dedicated staff, faculty, students, teachers, friends, whatever the category may be. We have an incredible community college district. I'm really proud of that. And I just wish you all health and a very smooth semester and good grades.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. And we appreciate your support team in the background, too. That's great. Leslie?
Um, I apologize because I am actually coming to you from Puerto Rico and the the wifi is no better here than it is in my home sometimes. So you were in and out. But anyway, it's great to to still be able to participate and and hear most of what people said. And I was really heartened about how even though we had problems, which I knew we would, that that we came together, everybody came together and been working really hard to help things go more smoothly. And so I'm I'm very heartened by that and thankful for it and thankful for the effort of everyone to try and make this work as best we can as we move into the unknown. And I hope we have a as good a semester as is possible. And 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 I'm just excited for us. I could see the excitement from other people. I've had notes from some and hey, we carry on. So thanks. And thanks for your first meeting, Darren, as a chair. So thank you for running a great meeting and thank you for the last year with Margie and her great job. It's been wonderful.
Thank you, Leslie. We'll move on now to trustee Nancy Hinton. Nancy?
Do the fact I'll probably start copying. I'm not commenting this month. So I just think that sorry that I'm one of the four hundred, but we're moving on.
We're we're happy to see your face. And for me, I'm always happy to see your cats in the background. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Antonio?
No comment.
No comment? Oh, you guys played not too easy. Okay. Milton, Dr. Milton Richards, I want to catch you before you lose your enthusiasm about the Triple C T nomination. So
I believe I've said enough tonight. Thank you. Happy New Year.
All right. Margie, it's your turn to bring the crowd around.
Well, really chiming in on what everyone has said already, Happy New Year. And what a great start to the new year. And I wanted to draw attention to one of the, one of seven of our priorities of the board, which was to support the chancellor and the colleges in efforts to recapture and increase college enrollment. So we talk about one surge of COVID, but I want to celebrate the surge in enrollment and congratulate the chancellor and and the leadership at both colleges, as has already been noted tonight for in these trying times to lure back students to put, as Dimitri said, some hope in their future. And there's no better way, in my opinion, than education. So Happy New Year to everyone. And and finally, a special thank you to Chancellor Young, who on a Saturday evening, very cold in the evening after sitting in traffic, leaving Dodge Ridge with his family skiing the whole day, he stopped off to visit my family in Twain Heart. So it was lovely to meet Chancellor Young's wife and his beautiful grown children. And always thinking, him always thinking of of everyone else. So Happy New Year to everyone and what a great start to the new year.
Thank you, Margie. I just want to close out, echo what everybody says. I mean, tonight has shown with the reports from staff. What a great institution we have. Certainly, the rollout in an environment like this is going to be rocky. But everyone has risen to the occasion. I frequently take walks on the west campus and in the hard work and dedication of of our classified professionals and our public safety department, I see them out there. I see them working. Thank you very much for everything that you do, our faculty working through this environment, just everyone. And and last but not least, our 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 students. I also want to thank the determination of this board has always been to be fiscally responsible. And we showed that tonight by passing the the refunding bonds that are going to save district taxpayers a little over six million dollars. So we're showing ourselves to be good stewards of the money we get from the community and and doing our part as sound fiduciary for the district. So with that, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on February ninth, two thousand twenty two. Closed session will begin at three P M. And open session will begin at five thirty. Don't miss it. All right, with that, we're signing off.